Ernest. Trustee Pierce, can you hear us ma'am?
Yes, I can.
All right.
Me?
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, I did. Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the state of America.
The Republic.
Which stands one nation.
Indivisible.
Espoke.
I'd like to do just a quick roll call of trustees, if we don't mind, please. Trustee Kane.
Present.
Trustee Maria.
Present.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Pierce.
Here.
And trustee Stoma, I'm here. So that makes a quorum. Five. What are what are displayed now is our guiding principles. These are the the principles we are using to guide us through our discussions, our deliberations and our decisions as we go along this path. And it's a significant path that we're on. We're going to talk more about it this session where you're going to be able to choose a new chancellor, although there's no substitute for the old chancellor. The old guy. Hey, I'm in the same boat. But and, you know, we're gonna. And that's that's gonna be a heavy lift for everyone. And we're going to ask all your participation and help as we go down through this. Tonight, we're going to vote on. Letting administration negotiate a contract with a search firm that's going to help us, help lead us through this. And I'll have more to say later in the meeting, but we've got a lot to do and we've got to keep our eyes on our banner and keep moving forward as one lone star. And that's another. That's another term you'll hear more and more over the next several months, one lone star. And that's what we need to be pulled together to get through this time. Chancellor, has the minutes been posted?
Yes, they've been posted in accordance with the law.
Does your do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. One, Dr. John Bergdoff, please.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. John Bergduff, President of the American Federation of Teachers at Lone Star College, and thank you once again for this opportunity to speak with you all. Over the last few months, I have been reporting to you about the responses AFT received from the all employee survey we conducted in the fall. We received over eleven hundred responses from all categories of Lone Star employees, faculty, staff and administrators, full time and part time. Those responses included many thousands of individual comments which we are still reading and analyzing. Tonight, I want to focus in on one specific question we asked, the quantitative data we got on that question, how we believe that data is reflected in the written responses, and some recommendations. The question is, how well does your immediate supervisor respect your responsibilities and workload? Amazingly, the quantitative responses we got to this question were virtually identical among full-time faculty, full-time staff and administrators. In all three categories, roughly three quarters of respondents stated that their supervisor respects their responsibilities and workload either fairly well or very well. The remaining quarter stated that their supervisor respects their responsibilities and workload either not very well or not at all. Three quarters of all full-time employees reporting positive feedback about how they are treated by their supervisors is undeniably good. We see many free response comments that qualitatively respect what we see quantitatively. Two examples out of literally hundreds are, my experience working for LSC has been awesome. And I really like my job and the people I work with. Three out of four employees speaking positively about their supervisors is undeniably good news. However, a quarter of the full-time workforce gives us negative feedback about their supervisors. Although that is a minority, it is still a lot of people, too many to just write off as a few malcontents. Two sample quotes that probably come from this quarter. My supervisor is a toxic person who has created a toxic work environment. And it is a negative hostile culture with a lack of trust and respect. We got dozens of comments like these as well. Because our survey was anonymous, we don't know which employees are in the good three quarters or in the low one quarter, or what offices they work for or who their supervisors are. However, based on the content of some of the specific comments and also from general wisdom from the literature, we believe there are telltale signs one can look for to identify offices that might be in trouble. Here are five signs we would like to suggest based on our survey. One, high employee turnover compared to similar departments. Two, high rates of absenteeism relative to comparable departments. Three, reduced productivity for those departments where productivity is something that can be measured. That's not always easy to define in a human-oriented institution like a college. Four, larger than average numbers of employee complaints. And five, excessive disciplinary actions compared to similar departments. Watching for and actively reaching out to these departments is an actionable and worthwhile task. The goal is not to get people in trouble, supervisors or employees, but to make sure that those departments and especially the leaders of those areas get mentoring and support toward building a more positive work environment. We believe Lone Star can do better than a three-quarter positive response rate relative to employees' direct supervisors. How do we know that? Well, you might have noticed that I haven't said anything about our part-time employees yet. Among part-time faculty and staff, over ninety percent of respondents report that their supervisors respect their responsibilities and workload either fairly well or very well. That's quite phenomenal. And this says something astounding about the people who oversee part-time employees. It also sets a bar that we can all shoot for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any introductions, special guests, recognitions?
Sorry, we have Cassandra Jenkins with Community Impact, and I saw her come in. Yeah, all right, welcome Cassandra.
All righty. Your workshop, are we having a workshop? No workshop, okay. Then do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February second workshop and regular meeting? So move. You got a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Let me note, trustee Wilson has joined us. Trustee Wilson, can you hear us ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Great. Chancellor, any special reports?
Yeah, a couple of information pieces. One is, we have a. We have a legal conference here tomorrow. We're expecting about two hundred and seventy-five people. These are our own employees. And every other year, we have a an internal one, and then the other odd year, we have an external one. So we we want to be a gathering spot for people all over the country for legal matters. So then we did one, Mario, last year from outside, and we had, what, two hundred and fifty people there? That many? Two hundred? Yeah. So the next piece of this is Jennifer. Jennifer, you'll come out. We've received a, some of you are aware of this, or you've been reading about it in a paper. The governor sent out a directive about TikTok, TikTok. And yes, I do know what TikTok is. No, I do not have it. My grandkids have it. And. But we have directives over TikTok and some other apps that we cannot use on our school computers, so.
Yes, just briefly, it was December seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Can you hear me okay?
Is that okay? Okay.
Okay. That Governor Greg Abbott directed all state agencies, which includes the college, to ban prohibited technologies. There is a list of them. TikTok is included on that list. It's in. By personal opinion, probably the most recognizable on that list, but it is more than just TikTok. So there, the directive was for the Texas Department of Public Safety and the Texas Department of Information Resources to develop a plan for how state agencies would would comply with this. So per that, we did develop a policy that we submitted to the state. It was due February fifteenth. That's when we submitted it, and it's currently under review by the state. So the impact here is that the ban of prohibited technologies is that these technologies are not to be used on any LSC-owned devices. So we are going to be working on removing and blocking all of these banned prohibited technologies. In addition, on on any devices, on any private devices, if they are being used to conduct college business on those devices, then the ban does also apply there as well. So that is just the update on the prohibited technologies, and we will be communicating additional details to all employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please note, trustee vote has joined our meeting. Welcome Dave to the meeting. I'm sorry, trustee Salivar sucked in on me too. Welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Anything from the Faculty Senate? Not tonight. All right. Board members and reports from board members? Go ahead, trustee Kane.
Several items that I'd like to to mention. In early February. Trustee Maria, I, the Tenny, Association of Community College Trustees Conference, good general sessions, good breakout sessions. One of the things that struck me about that conference was a number of individuals there who were both. Trustees from all across the US as well as college presidents and so on, who 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 came up to Dr. Head and expressed their appreciation for his leadership of Lone Star and wished him well in his retirement. And I thought that was really, that was a very special touch that those folks gave him. February tenth, I was able to attend the Employee Awards Luncheon, which was just a wonderful event, nice honor for people who are being recognized for their years of service and other recognitions. And then on February twenty-third, was fortunate to attend the Chancellor, a donor appreciation luncheon, which was a way to thank the donors to the Education Foundation. And also was very impressed, sixteen different students were given one thousand dollar scholarships by the Education Foundation. Eight of them spoke. The thing that struck me about those essays that they spoke from, not only was there a lot of quality in those essays, I mean, a really good amount of quality, but the poise of the students at the podium was very noteworthy. So congratulations to all sixteen of those students, to the eight who spoke. And thanks again to the donors, to the Education Foundation, as well as to Nicole Robinson-Gaultier for her leadership of that foundation.
All right, thank you. Any other reports from other trustees, trustee Sullivan?
Yes, sir. If no one else has anything, I'll jump in. Dr. Kane, those were probably all Klein District students that spoke so eloquently, right? So I just have three things and try to be brief. I do want to acknowledge Linda Head and her work that she does with respect to providing economic development information and corporate training, programming, information. I was in a meeting with her and Harris County Commissioner Tom Ramsey earlier this week. A friend of the commissioner and was allowed to sit in, is productive, and she took time to educate him on what goes on at Lone Star, all the good work that we do, but then also offered to him, as she does other partners, an opportunity to participate with economic development data, research, and anything that that the college can do. So glad to see that. To meet regularly with Dr. Ron Salazar, Dr. Carla Decore from University Houston, Victoria, actually served on one of their business advisory committees. And this is a compliment that Dr. Salazar asked me to give publicly, and that's to acknowledge the hard work of Dr. Fay Lee, who's Dean of Instruction over at the Cypher Campus. And he says that she is really an asset and is rekindling a lot of partnerships. Things are moving there. And it's good for me. I just am so proud to hear positive comments about what Lone Star does. And then lastly, on on a fun note, I attended Lone Star Retiree Celebration Luncheon. It was fun, lighthearted, and it continues to build goodwill with our retirees. They're our ambassadors, and it's good to bring them in. And I'll also take this moment to say that Dr. Head failed to recognize Dr. Riley and forgot her name, and she had to say, I'm over here, I'm over here. Remember that? So I just want to say, never goes unnoticed what you do.
Mr. Chair, this is trustee Pierce. I'd just like to say on behalf of trustee Wilson and myself, we had a chance to participate in North Harris's Black History Month program. And we want to panel. It was really nice and kudos to Dr. Griffin and for inviting us and kudos to Dr. Blanson for acknowledging us. It was really good. It was good to see the students perform, good to see faculty and staff there, and it was a proud moment. I really enjoyed it.
Great. Any other reports from?
I have an announcement.
Go ahead, trustee Salivar.
Sure. I don't know if it was discussed prior for me coming here, but this is, you know, just briefly congratulate all the women in our lives. So today is the Women's Month. So I want to thank all the women who are here, all the women who have guided us and, you know, make sure that we we behaved and we did what we needed to do. So thank you so much to all our women, and if you have sisters, mothers, aunts, friends, congratulate them on this special month. Thank you.
Here, here.
Can I say one thing?
Go ahead.
One thing that trustee Sullivan did not mention, and I'm glad I'm toward the end of my career, because at that meeting he's talking about, I forgot to introduce him, and he was at my table, and he and he left. And usually, I'm very diligent about that, so I had to introduce him post-departure, but I'm trying not to do that very much coming down the stretch, so.
Any other comments? Just as. You might.
I attended the awards ceremony also. Steve, did you? Did you get a special award as the? I mean.
No.
Has anybody been in the in the district longer than you?
Uh, there's a couple of people, not many. I gave myself, you probably didn't hear me, but I gave myself a thirty-nine-year award, which there's no such thing, because I'm not going to make it to forty, but no, I didn't. There's only a, I'm looking at somebody that knows, maybe four or five people that have been here longer than me, something like that. Yeah.
When I first came to the district and was making the rounds of the campuses that we had at that time, I've been here a while too. You were the president over. Tom Ball.
Kingwood.
Kingwood, that's right, I'm sorry, Kingwood. And. You showed me around. And you knew the names of the the guys doing the trimming and all the landscaping there. And everybody else that we walk by in the administration there. And I was really impressed by that. So.
Thank you. I remember that.
You can forget.
You know, I remember that visit like it was yesterday. You've probably forgotten that you were asking me where all the French drains were. And I didn't know at the time, but I learned exactly where they were after that, and every other place I've ever worked. I can tell you where the French drains are. I remember walking around with you though outside. Thank you for your comments.
Any other comments? I'll move forward. Policy Review Committee. Trustee Sullivan, do you have a report for us on the policy review?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. The Policy Review Committee was myself, trustee Broussard, trustee Kane, and we met and evaluated a proposal to increase the chancellor's authorization on contracts from one hundred thousand to increase it to two hundred and fifty thousand without having to come to the board. We view it as efficient as a reflection of what's going on at Lone Star now compared to when this policy was initially developed and truly reflects the times that we're in. The Policy Review Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the board approve the the change.
You can probably see that on the agenda in April.
Believe so. We tried to push it out pretty quick so that it would be on the agenda. Mr. Dr. Kane, if you want to add anything from that discussion, always happy to hear your thoughts.
Just the fact that it was an easy discussion to have in terms of giving the chancellor the the extra authority to do that. I think it's a good move and so I highly support it.
Counselor Castillo, do you have any other administrative policies that need to be considered?
So we have five that require the chair to appoint committees to review. Would you like for me to go one by one or read them all together?
You could just list through them. You don't have to read them in detail.
Yes, sir. So we have a paid time off policy that's being proposed. We have a section one policy that's actually being proposed by the Board Council. We have a section five policy for excused absences for military service. And then we have the LSE online policies. And then we have a one LSE policy. So there's a total of five policies that require assignments.
Trustee Sullivan, since you and your team done such an excellent job here, would you take these policies into consideration and report back in April on the on the progress to get these approved?
Sure, you bet. Dr. Kane, you in for another round?
Certainly.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it. I'm certainly trustee Broussard will cooperate as well.
Thank you, sir.
And Chair Stoma, just one more issue. Would you like for the committee to meet and conduct a public meeting?
Yes, the committee has to, you know, by our policy, the committee and by the law, the committee needs to have public meetings, the Policy Review Committee. Now, the chair, you can, it's up to you, it's your delegation, to conduct those meetings any way you say fit to get the work done. I mean, we're interested in results and getting things done. So I trust all of you will do so. So, sir, would you, will you and your your team take those policies and review those and make a recommendation?
Yes, sir. And coincidentally, Desiree sent an email out a few minutes ago, kind of polling of dates that everyone might be available, so we'll set on a date and a time that's convenient. And then Mario, if I could ask you to forward whatever it is we're going to work on to all of us, please, so that we can begin our research and review.
Yes, sir.
And Chief Counsel Castillo will work with you in setting up the public meetings and get that going.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All righty. As we mentioned earlier, we're going on a journey to select a new chancellor. By law, we have to appoint a search committee. I have those people named for the search committee. I've talked with them. They've agreed to serve. Trustee Kane will lead that committee. Trustee Maria will serve on that committee. Trustee Pierce will also serve on that committee, and myself will serve that committee. Now let me make it clear. The board makes the decisions here. The boards will consider all all evidences and information and go through our our due diligence, excuse me for using that wrong, to do our best to select the best person for the job, person who really cares about about the people here. But the search committee will will act on a day-to-day basis with the search firm that we are going to negotiate an agreement with. And we'll keep the board and this 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 committee here, this this meeting informed on the progress forward. So that's that's the purpose. Yes, yes. And again, the the search committee, whenever they meet, will meet under the Open Meetings Act. I mean, essentially, we'll adhere to that that law and regulation, and it will be a public meeting, that public meeting. So our intent here is to be transparent in everything we do. Because, I mean, we're here to serve you, and we serve the public, and you need to know what we're doing. But I can tell you, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and we're going to be asking you soon to help us with this work. So again, more more to come. All right. So no other discussion on that. We'll go to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to pull for discussion? Anyone? Going once? Going twice? Oh, good. So do I have a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? Then they pass. Thank you. What's up next? Personnel report, considerations, anything there, Chancellor? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, financial reports, I think. Jennifer?
Now you can hear me, right? Yes. Okay, there we go. Good evening. I do have the financial report. So this is for financial statements for the month ending January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, the current fiscal year. So first, for revenues, this chart shows that as of January thirty-first, we have collected seventy-one point eight percent of our revenues. And you can see where this trends compared to prior years. We're about at the same place as we were last year. Now, end of January is not even halfway through the year yet, but you can see it's seventy-one percent. That's a large percentage of our revenues. That is typical because we receive property taxes, the bulk of all property taxes during the months of December and January. So that's where we stand on revenue. So that is three hundred and three million that has been received so far this year out of a budgeted four hundred and twenty-two million. On expenditures, as of January thirty-first, we have spent a hundred and forty-nine million out of the budgeted four hundred and nine million. This is thirty-six percent, and you can see is is trending lower compared to prior years. So there, it looks like we're certainly on track, feeling comfortable that we will be within our budget this year in terms of expenditures. But really, what I wanted to get to is some of our forecasted variances for the year. This is the first month that I am sharing forecasted variances from the budget as adopted by the board, and these are estimates. So first, beginning with property taxes. So there, we do, it is sort of an extrapolation trend analysis based on what has been received so far, especially since the bulk of property taxes come in in the months of December and January. There, it is looking like that at the end of the year may come in about two point seven million below the amount budgeted, so we will keep an eye on that. At this time, it is not clear why that might be coming in less than what was budgeted, but with property taxes, even the budgeted amount is an estimate. On the positive side, investments, interest rates are up, I mean, right, mortgage rates are up. People generally know that interest rates have gone up. So there, on our pool accounts, we have, we're estimating additional three point nine million in revenues from investments. And then, let's see here. So the products and services, that one is definitely one to note. That one is primarily driven by University Park Buildings nine and ten. Those are buildings that we sold. Now, when we built this year's budget, the buildings were not yet sold. We were working on it, hoping it would all close, but we built. We were working on it, hoping it would all close, but we built the budget needing to assume, just in case they did not sell. Uh, so we did build this year's budget uh, with the normal operations of those two buildings. Um, of course, we didn't close on the sale of those buildings. So this reflects two point four million reduction in lease revenues that we would have otherwise received for that building. Uh, on the next slide, I'll show you where we are correspondingly reducing the budget that is associated with managing that building. Uh, but that one certainly is noteworthy. Um, and then miscellaneous are just some estimates that we're showing from changes in testing fees, payment plan volumes, bookstore receipts, and other changes in miscellaneous revenue. So here, net uh, forecasted variance on revenues of one point seven million below the budgeted amount. But so now here on the expenditure side, here, this primary place is where, this is where we are making that adjustment for Buildings nine and ten, right? We are no longer receiving those lease revenues, but we also no longer have the uh, internal operational activities associated with those buildings. So this is us essentially backing that budget out uh, now that we no longer have those buildings. Uh, so, okay, just the summary of this though. So in addition to this though, in the financials in your board book, we are also showing a a forecasted variance for our claims of lost revenue reimbursement that we are still able to do under the COVID funds. Uh, so in that, the net total is a positive improvement. In the budget that the board approved had us using uh, reserves of four point one million. With these forecasted changes, it has us down to still using reserves, but around the nine hundred thousand dollar um, range of use of reserves. This is still all estimates, um, and there's some up, some down, but the net is a positive look so far at the overall outcome of the budget. And then included in your book, it's a building and grounds report. Please feel free to let me know if there's any questions on projects underway. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Um, did this take into account the change in revenue for tuition that we just approved? Or is that, that's going to be for next year?
That will be for next year.
Okay.
Yes, that'll be for next fiscal year. The tuition for this year, our moments were down in the fall, they're up in the spring. It, they are net positive. Uh, however, we are also looking at waivers, right? We apply waivers for dual credit students and that such that at this point uh, we are looking at this year's revenues on tuition fees to be about at budget is what we're seeing so far this year, um, this year's budget for tuition and fee revenues is, at this time, no forecasted change.
So we'll come back in in June with the budget.
Yes, so that for next fiscal year's budget, uh, the schedule from here is there would be a June budget workshop where we present next year's proposed budget in more detail. And then August is when the board would have the the budget under consideration. And that's when the tuition fee change that was approved today will be reflected.
Mm-hmm. We we put that on the agenda now so that we can get it into the schedule, because the schedule goes out uh, April, when we start registration.
For the, for the fall?
Right. Yeah, everything else, all those other items that we had talked about, exemptions and taxes and all that, that can wait until uh, for a little, a little while, until June, so.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you. You mentioned, pardon me, uh, payment plans and caused me to think about our students and payment plans. If a student enters into a payment plan, are they charged a service fee or pay interest or anything? Could you talk about that for a minute?
They are, they are charged a fee uh, for signing up for the payment plan. Right now, that fee is twenty dollars that the student pays, um, and that's, there there's no interest charges on it. They pay the fee to join the payment plan.
Okay, it, where where's that money go? How necessary is it that we charge that?
Uh, so. Right, so that is actually in the works to be changed because we are changing vendors uh, for that. But right now, uh, those funds uh, go into our auxiliary revenues. Uh, the twenty dollars for the payment plan fees. Uh, we currently, our current vendor is TouchNet, but from a, this was a board agenda item approved a while back. Um, we are working on changing to Nell Net as our new vendor that manages our student payments. Uh, so that is going to change the, just the financial flow of those payment plan fees because Nell Net will take over customer service and management of the payment plans um, for Lone Star College. Uh, so that fee, we're looking at it going down to fifteen dollars, and that fee will then go to Nell Net because they will be performing those functions that Lone Star College is today. Uh, so that's a change that's uh, we're working on.
So so the fee is for the administrative functions of the vendor, is that correct? It pays them?
Uh, when it changes, yes. Today, yeah, today it comes to us and we manage those functions.
And then for, if you change the vendor, then it'll go to them for their fee to manage it.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know off the top of your head, or since you have some of your staff out there, how much money we're bringing in from those fees? I I know we have it, I just don't know where it is right now.
It's about five hundred thousand.
Okay.
From those fees.
I just wonder if it's worth it. I mean, twenty bucks doesn't sound like much, and I'm not going down that road of people are hurting and stuff. I'm just talking about, as a student, is it worth twenty dollars to go on a payment plan? I don't know if it is or not, it's, tonight's not the discussion for that necessarily, but just caused me to kind of think about it. We do a lot for students, and maybe that's something we could put on future lists, I don't know. Just something to be aware of, now I'm aware of it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't know if you're able to answer it, or maybe Steve. Um, but how good are we in kind of marketing the scholarships that we can offer, or um, you know, loans that books, students don't have to pay back? Do you have numbers on that, or?
I I don't know that I have numbers. Um, I I will say right now, in uh, um, collaboration with the foundation, Financial Aid is working on implementing a new software system called Scholarship Universe that is trying to simplify uh, what the, how the students apply for scholarships. Uh, so I know we are working on trying to make that an easier process for students. Uh, but I would need to get back to you with additional details beyond that.
Let us, let us get back with you over that. We have two sets of scholarships, right? One is uh, the foundation, then the other is just scholarships we give through the school itself. And those are technically two separate entities. If we could, let us, if we can come back to the next board meeting, that's probably a good.
I'm putting, I noted as an issue, so we we will come back to it.
Okay.
Chairman, while we're at it, I have one question pertaining to that. Um, I know we work with the nonprofits, local uh, organizations who offer scholarships for rare students. Do we publish those? Do we have, um, do we share that information with our, all our students, or?
Uh, so this is, this is where I would like to say we'll come back because Nicole Robinson does a great job managing our foundation, and that's where a lot of the scholarship work comes through is out of the foundation.
And that was my question, is it only foundation, is it other scholarships as well? That's that's what I was wanting to find out.
The scholarships are primarily through the foundation.
Yeah.
And I know that we do a very good job of that, um, we do extremely good job about that. But um, just want to see if 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 a student is able to get, you know, funds without paying back. I think it's something very good. Um, because I know when I was a student, I had a lot of student loans, and it was a lot of money. I paid it off over ten years. But if we can able to sort of control that, um, I think that would be, that would be fine. I think we all are agreed to that, so.
That's right. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Jennifer, thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, we, we, the board are going to go into closed session. Now let me say before we actually go there, uh, when we come back, we're not going to do anything but re-adjourn and adjourn the meeting. So there was not, we're not going to conduct any other business. So just unless you don't have anything else to do, you don't have to wait around. Uh, and I I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it. Um, so with that, uh, I now uh, close this meeting to go into closed session at five thirty-nine P.M. Thank you.